Thank you, Mary. Um, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I did not receive any new questions um after the last board meeting, but I will go over um the questions that I did receive. Um, and the first question was um in regards to um page seven, where it says that schools can change the terms of the handbook without notice. There were some question about that as to how what the process was and how people are notified if there are any changes happen with handbook or any policy change that happened throughout the year. The process is that it would go to the policy committee. Policy committee would take it to the board and then and once the board has approved, it would um get um communicate out out to families that they're. And then the the um adaptation would happen the following year within the handbook. It's really important to remember that all of these handbooks are a policy themselves. Um, the, let's see.
And it's important to know that that all of the policies are driven by main state legislature. So every policy that we have currently that's featured on our website is driven by legislative law. So that's why MSMA is so intricately involved in our policy development because they work directly with the legislature to translate that into policy statements. Do you have a question, Danielle, about that?
I have a comment.
Okay, sure.
Because, so it says that the school reserves the right to change the terms of the handbook, but clearly the school can't just say, oh, I'm gonna change the, I'm gonna change the handbook.
Exactly.
So, why is this even here? Because they can't do that.
Well, it's there to notify you that if there were to become a policy, a legislative action that translates into a policy that schools have to adopt, and there's a conflict in the student handbook, it it the likelihood of that happening, I think is probably next to never. But in case, there are some references you noticed in the handbook to specific policies that the board has. So if it were that a policy was was required to be developed by school board that was impacting some provision we had within our student handbook, we would have to make a revision to that. But as Georgia said, the process that goes through is it comes from the legislature to Kathy Katrina through MSMA, then it goes to the policy committee, then it comes to the board. So we would vote on it before it would ever happen.
But that's before. Why is it even in here? Because your, the school, like Georgia can't just go and say, oh, nope, we're gonna get rid of that in the handbook, and we're just not just not gonna tell you. There's there's a step and a process. So saying that they're just gonna, you're, they can change anything without notice is not true.
Can I just add something here? I think when they were to use use the word school here, it like you're included in that, I think.
Yes.
You know, it's the school, the school board that, and it's like a zipper clause and a contract. Like you have to change something, like the statute or something. The language gives you the right to open, like if it's not there, it it gives you, it kind of gives you the okay to open this back up and say, we need to change some statute change, I think.
But that's a process, and we do that every year anyway, correct?
But it could happen mid-year. Usually doesn't happen mid-year. Like, once this is approved, it's good until next July, but something could change.
But it's still a process. It's not without notice.
Right.
Because it goes through the school board, and this says without notice or without notice.
Oh, yeah.
Look, so so it's not without notice. There's a process to it.
If I can give you an example, I can give you an example of what. There was an example, there's an example in our handbook where um some language uh needed to be inserted in the handbook around restraint and seclusion. Um, that that language does not get changed until until the the handbook is updated the following year, but you, as families, are notified of the policy change. So, once it becomes policy change, but it isn't, it's, the handbook's not gonna get changed mid-year. But but there, within this handbook, there could be a change made.
Could I, could I make a suggestion, Danielle? Could this language read?
It's the language.
The school board, the school board reserves, because ultimately the school board makes that decision. The school board reserves the right to change the term of the handbook, period. At any time period, or at any time period.
But but there is notice after it's done. So, like, you would have, they could still have notice. It's just the wording on it, because as a parent reading this, I'm like, I see, and I'm here at the meeting, so I understand, like, the process. But just as a parent that has no idea what's happening, you look at it, and you're like, so they can just, like, we have a handbook, we have a signed, they can just really notice, do whatever they want, whenever they want. That's what it looks like.
It appears arbitrary.
Yes, it does.
So let's let's work with that language, okay, so that it it doesn't give the impression that it's arbitrary, whether it's, you say, the school board reserves the right to change the terms of this handbook, period, and and I don't, I mean, the process really accompli, I, would you be comfortable with that, Seth? Georgia?
I'm comfortable, just sometimes when something's bulleted at the bottom of a page, and it, there's a reason that it's there. And there may be at some point that somebody said, you need this in there because it covers you if you ever, as a board, you make a change, and the change happens, and you haven't had time to make. I'll go with whatever. Just a lot of times when you're dealing with this stuff, sometimes that's there because somebody that either has an education law background or something put that there. I'm not sure, but whatever. I mean, that's that's the board's discretion.
But if we're making a change, there's steps. Like, you can't just, you can't just say, oh, I don't like that, so I'm gonna change it.
No.
So if we make a change, we have a school board, like, it goes to policy, and then there's a school board meeting.
Yep.
It's a public meeting. So if people don't attend that, that's their own doing.
Yep.
But it is still public knowledge that it has been changed, and then something can be sent out. But they have the right to attend that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have to make arbitrary changes to the handbook. You know, they're they're policy, they're policy-driven most of the time.
So I think if we if we insert school board and and reserves the right to change in terms of the handbook, I I think that at any time without notice gives a feeling of arbitrariness to it. And and we know we have the legal right to do that anyway, so we don't, I don't know. I don't have any difficulty reiterating that language.
Rather than put school, a school board, I'd put RSU 78 reserves the right to change.
Okay, there you go.
It's just the wording. I mean, if people know that, they know that the school board or whatever does that, but it's just, it's just the wording.
Okay.
It's the way that it's worded.
Your point is, your point is well taken.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I don't see anyone taking, Georgia, are you taking notes?
Yep.
Okay, that's, I just wanna make sure we, this, she has the copy that's gonna go to Kim.
It it also, um, there was also a suggestion while we're on page seven um that within the handbook, there's some language that um that sort of states when we have policies that are listed, that um where they can find the policies. And if you look at at the bottom of page seven, it says, all policies referenced in this handbook are available on the RLRS website, just so that families know where to access those. So that was another suggestion that was made. Um, if we go to page nine, um, let me find it here. If you look under um the, it, I think it's listed in the elementary and um secondary most serious acts of conduct. If you look under number two, there was a question about financial restitution for repair of damage caused to the school or related environments. Um, it, I, I think, um, so the the um, the question was, you know, this kind of sets us up. Um, it's not great language. I I I do kind of agree that it isn't, but this is really in there um when there's malice or intent to cause damage in the building. We don't, we don't generally go after families for accidental damage. Um, so, you know, maybe we should say, you know, for malice or, I mean, we have had, we've had break-ins in our building, and we've had significant damage. I don't know how those um incidents resulted. I don't know if there was any um financial restitution placed on the families for those things, because I wasn't administrator at the time, but it just gives, it just protects us in in those events.
Paint spilled in the halls and things like that, Georgia?
I'm sorry, Mary, I didn't hear your question.
I said, I I believe, wasn't there paint that was thrown in the halls and when it occurred?
It was paint.
Yeah, so I think if you add something about malice in that sentence, that would be, that would be helpful. Uh, Diane, I, I need, Danielle?
Um, reading this from a parent's perspective, when you say damaged caused to the school, is it emotional or physical?
This is physical.
Okay, but it doesn't, like, it, reading it? Like, I just assume that it's physical, but if you say, well, this teacher now has to go to therapy because of whatever, like, I I think that it should state.
Okay, so physical, physical damage caused by malice to the school environment.
I agree, I absolutely agree that there should be something in here. I just think that it should state physical. Like, you need, if your kid destroys something, if there's something, whatever, that it should state that.
Yep, no problem. Okay, Georgia?
Okay, um, the next suggestion or uh question was on page ten in regards to, if you look down through the students' rights and responsibilities, um, the second bullet point states that the the right um to attend free public schools in accordance with provisions of main statutes and policies of the board. Um, this is stat just um statute language. It's found within Title 20A, Part One, the general provisions, which states that it is the intent of the legislature that every person within the age limitations prescribed in state statutes shall be provided an opportunity to receive benefits of a free public education. Um, in other words, there's no tuition charged. Are there any further questions on that one?
Yeah, but homeschool's not free, the taxpayers pay for it. Wow. I understand.
Page twelve. There's some, some, as you can see, there's some new language that was added in around the excused tardies and um, you know, allowing the athletic administrator or principal and approve and, you know, approved by the coach supervisor before the student's allowed to participate. Really, really what this this was designed to do, I believe, and Seth can maybe speak more to this. I think this just really allows for a little bit more flexibility in decision-making when it comes to um athletics and students being able to play in in games. Um, there's a lot of extraordinary circumstances that come about, and, you know, the language um sort of, it ties our hands. So this, I believe, gives us just a little bit more flexibility.
Seth, would you like to speak directly to that?
Yeah, I believe when the athletic department considered this, it's mostly if you have a student that stays home, and they say they're sick all day, and then they come into last period to go play in the game. And we have language now that we, you know, unless you have a doctor's note, even if it's excused, your parents say you you're sick, if you're because of an illness without a doctor's note that day, you're not playing in that game or practicing. Because it happens. Kids will stay home all day, say they're sick, come into last period, think they're going for the game. Well, if you're sick, we don't want you playing, because it's a safety issue. Yes.
But if they get a doctor's note, they're fine?
Yeah, it's like if they have a doctor's point that day, like, no, they'll be okay to play them. That's, and it happens, that happens, so.
It, yeah, like I said, this. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Georgia.
Uh, like I said, there's just, there's a lot of extraordinary circumstances that come about, um, things that we just don't think of, and it and it just allows a team of people to be able to look at it and make a a fair decision.
And I take it, I take it that this is historically been a been an issue of problems, like.
It's it's just once in a while. It's just, yeah, it's just, it's not all the time, but people do play that game.
Oh, no, I, here, use my account, share with, yeah, welcome. You're welcome.
So this is even for excused tardies? So if it's excused, if you're late and it's excused, you still have the option to not be able to play.
Has to be clear by the end of the session. Yeah, honestly, it's mostly around, like, if they're, say, they're sick, or if they're illness or have an injury. That's what, like, if a student has an excuse tardy, we can say.
Right, but still, player wants, say, they have a headache first period, they come in second period, and they're better than.
If they stay home and they say they're sick that day, they don't play.
So even if they have a headache first period, they can't play if they come in second period?
That's our policy, yeah. If it's because of illness, if your child's out because of illness, it's been policy for as long as I can remember, you don't play sports.
So if you miss a period of school a day, regardless, if you don't have a doctor's note, you can't play, you're getting that even. I'm just clarifying.
If it's because of illness, if it's because of illness, yeah.
So headache or whatever.
Well, any excuse tardy, the way this reads, any excuse.
Right.
Any excuse tardy whatsoever. So if you previously excused tardy, you still have to get the blessing of the athletic administrator or the principal.
Yeah, most of it, it's something like, oh, we were late, like, we got caught in traffic. Um, I had an appointment, I had.
Well, there's no sidebars, I just wanted to hear one person at a time, Seth?
Yeah, like, a lot of times, like, I don't know, the parent, like, car would start. We had a dentist appointment, we had to go to something, then those are excuses. Say, yep, you're good to go. But if you call in and say, my child's sick, has a headache, they can't come to school because they don't feel well, then forever it's been you don't play that day in the game.
Idiot, Danielle.
Okay, so say my kid is sent home from school the day before in the morning with a fever.
Yeah.
And they have to be 24 hours fever-free, but their fever breaks right after you get them home or whatever, and the time they can come back is at 1:30 the next day, that's been 24 hours, or by the time their fever breaks. And I bring them back, they have a game that day, but they, they're not, they are not allowed in school prior to, even though they feel fine and their fever's gone, they're not allowed in.
Yeah.
So I bring them back at that time. That's, like, that's out of anyone's control.
I'd wanna talk to Lindsay on that, if she may say she could go get a doctor's note. I mean, we're, most of these are tried to protect kids from not taking care of themselves.
And you know, and here's the thing too, Danielle, I'm sure we can all come up with very unusual scenarios that might feel like they're gray in between the lines. And I think, I think the overarching thing here is reasonability really does really lose the coaches. Have a say in it, the principal has a say in it, but it stands to reason that if a kid is out sick.
I don't, I don't, I, I just, I mean, I, I, it just.
See, what happens a lot here is.
The wording I'm talking about. I just, I, I don't.
Well, the wording is someone in people.
I know, it's not like people.
Excuse, excuse.
No, you're not supposed to.
The first sentence should just be straight, because if it's, it's either an excuse tardy or it's not.
Yes, that's the problem.
If it's an excuse tardy, why does it need an additional blessing? If it's an excuse tardy, you just said the policy is.
Because you can get, you can get an excuse tardy for being ill. Like, if you call and say, I'm ill, they, okay, you're tardy, excuse.
But what I'm saying is, is that you're saying, the way that this reads, and I'm not trying to lure you the hell out of it, but the way that it reads is, excuse tardies must be cleared. So why don't we just say, why don't we just take out, again, this gets back to, I don't know where Seth gets cut and paste from. Just take out the first, let me finish, let me finish. The first sentence, just delete it and just say, any student tardy due to illness or unauthorized absence. It could be an excuse tardy due to illness. They shall not be permitted to participate in any activities that day unless the student has his note, medical provider clearing them for play that day. I'm saying, just leave that first sentence out, you don't need it.
Agreed.
Agreed. I I I'm about trying to get simple, because all of a sudden, you're starting to create 500 different scenarios, then you guys have to manage those. You guys have enough to manage.
I don't disagree with that. Could you, when that's up, we have to sponsor.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not eliminating saying what you wanna say.
Yeah, exactly.
So, you know, you see, it's still, it's still a discussion.
You've covered it enough in the policy alone. I think it's extreme, that's, that's all.
Okay, so I think that's, that's a decided issue, okay. Georgia, let's move on.
Okay, um, page thirteen, why in the process for applying for absences? Are we not giving the schoolwork uh in advance for an approved leave? Um, I think Seth spoke to this one at the board meeting. I feel like we came out with some consensus on this, but is there any further discussion that needs to take place?
And as I told you, Georgia, that just needs to be rewired, renumbered.
Yeah, the bottom, and you just, it says number eight, it starts at number one. Okay, and then the last, um, the last question I got was on page thirty-four um in regards to, um, it is the first large paragraph in the middle of the um page. It starts with students who choose not to adhere. If you read down a little bit, the question was, if there's a disagreement between students and or parents, guardians, and the staff regarding the inappropriateness of clothing, the principal will ensure the students and staff are not distracted by the students' clothing choices. Um, the instructional environment must be free of distractions so that all students can learn. Um, the question was asked, what does that a actually mean? And really what it means is that the student could be placed um in an alternative setting to work if there was no consensus on the matter. So we can add that language if you clarifies.
Yeah, I think this, I think that should say that, because I was confused by that. What, what does that mean, that other kids won't be distracted? And I think it just that the student is placed in an alternative, alternative learning situation. Somewhere else in the world.
Yeah.
We agree with that? So that clears that up?
Yeah.
So we taking out that whole sentence?
No, we're just adding that what that means is that the 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 principal or the superintendent would place that student in an alternative learning uh space for the remainder of the day.
Yeah, see, again, I think we're adding additional language, just creates fight. And to me, I would just, I would take that part out. I would just take the second clause and just say it, that the student, the option is, the administration reserves the right to make determination acceptable, acceptable, or unacceptable, as well as appropriate disciplinary action, including separating the student into whatever, and that covers it. Rather than if there is an injury disagreement, and this, just creates, I think it just creates more discussion that adds additional burden on the administration. In my opinion, and maybe I differ from everybody, but in my opinion, if we have to trust our administrators enough, if they think there's there's clothing that's inappropriate there, let us make the call on that. It doesn't mean there can't be a discussion that happens after, but I don't think this needs to turn into like a judicial process to determine that part. I don't know how you guys feel, Rusty feel, but I would rather the administrators not spend a lot of time on it. It used to be when I was in school, and I remember Tom Ward, he's like, you need to go change, or you gotta wear this, or you, you need to go change, put on your your T-shirt, you got in your gym locker, and that's it. Or like what what Amber said, she used to give out the thing.
Oh, no. And I, and I go.
I think we're opening ourselves up for a bunch of arbitrary numbers.
Black and white, where it's all written out, or you just say, uh, up to the administration. This is what, it's either appropriate or it's not.
Right.
And if they feel it's not appropriate, then we're done. Otherwise, you need to list an entire list of what is not.
Well, can I call on people, let's, let's, Robert's rules?
One of the things I remember when we met earlier was we, I thought we had talked about deleting the sentence that began to, that there is a disagreement, and then we went right to the administration reserves the right to make determinations. It was, yeah, a lot of that.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I thought we were there.
So I'm not sure why. Talking about, yeah.
So you got that note, Jeff? You have that note, Seth, and we'll take that, that's out?
If there is a disagreement, comma, strike the rest to the capital T of the event.
Yes.
That becomes lowercase.
Absolutely.
I got it, that, yeah.
You comfortable with that, Georgia?
Yes.
Okay.
Disagreement, I disagree with my eight-year-old seventy thousand times a day.
Since we're on page thirty-four, I have one note.
Okay.
Can we just give the kids an extra milk if they need it? We really need to charge forty cents. The amount of time that it takes, I remember Sheila always having the change cup of the lunch thing. The other reason we got rid of all this, we got a six million dollar budget.
Isn't everything free now, anyway?
Well, it says, one additional milk is charged at forty cents if we go to the parents.
And at the end of the year, you don't know your kid's getting anything, and then you get a bill that says, oh, you owe twenty dollars. I'm like, for what? I've been packing this lunch all year. And I'm like, oh, he's making milk all year.
Let's just get rid of that. I mean, that seems to me like an administrative nightmare, and if we gotta put more in the budget, talk to the chair of finance, we'll look at. I just, I just think we need to get.
We just have to make sure, because we're providing free lunch, because we're provision two, like, because lunch is just free for two years. We apply for provision two, so we still have to do all, like, this year, we have to go back to tracking all our lunches sold. We just gotta make sure we're not breaking some rule there by.
We're not violating.
We, we, it has to be tracked, because the government, we have to say we're paying for it, so we still have to track.
I'm feeling the track. Let's just, but let's give it for free.
Okay, do the schools pay for it?
Yes.
I wish I knew the number, so I could tell.
I'm really proud of our school system that we provide. I want it for our stay.
We probably sell.
I think you need to work on Rangel just paying for the lunches, like Rangel Plantation pays for the lunches.
They always used to.
My husband's gotta be sixty-nine, and they can eat all those years, and they still do. Free lunch, come on, Rangel's switching up.
Okay, so you'll check into that.
We are doing free lunch.
In the whole year?
No, it did, eighty, twenty extra notes, yeah. Some kids take them. Do you wanna limit?
I'd say when we were.
I'm not, like, some middle school boys take like cake, chocolate.
I'm so confused now. I think, please, one person talk at a time. And can we do that in an orderly way, just so we can have a more organized conversation? Amber, I didn't understand what you were saying.
I just said, Rangel people, someone should take to the to the town. Rangel Plantation pays for their kids' lunches, it's in the budget. So when Rangel goes and informs their big budget, people here on the board ought to speak and say, we ought to, I don't know how it would work, but the plantation plants in their budget X number of amount of money for their food. I mean, really? I mean, I just think that they should do that, we wouldn't have to worry about that. Yes, they're all getting free right now because of COVID and relief and whatever. But how many milks, how many extra milk are we talking? Anybody know? Anybody know, I mean, maybe my businesses can pay for it.
I I think we're done with having towns having to pay for lunch. It's, to me, it seems like moving forward to the foreseeable future, like, kids are gonna eat free. Milks, I would say maybe tw- I would say, because sometimes, sometimes it's more, I'd say twenty. Kids, like, some of the middle school boys take like three chocolate milks or three a day.
Twenty extras.
Twenty extras a day, but I just wanna make, so what we're gonna say is, because the lunch is getting provided, one milk. And we make.
Somebody who's standing up for milk may get an executive decision that we could just walk off with twenty milks.
Yes, we.
Not one kid, all the kids.
Yeah, we we can do that, they don't take that many, but I just wanna make sure, like, when I talk to Roxy. And so what we're saying is, so it may have to go to finance, I don't know, is that we're gonna track, we have to track the extra milks, and that's gonna come out of the school, the district's gonna pay for that. We want a lobby billing, parents? Okay.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Georgia?
Yeah.
As you, yeah.
I'll go with that, Rox. And and that, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, Rangel Plantation always had that, I thought it was a great thing, and uh, I don't think in the past two years anyone's fulfilled for that part, because I haven't seen anything go up that. But I I'd like to just build it automatically into our budget next year, and then it's, then that, you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, you make a mountain over that since you're chair of finance, okay? Okay, Georgia, any other, any other things to point out?
No, nothing.
We had a point where all your questions and your concerns have been answered.
Yes.
And so can I have a motion to uh accept the parent, student, and parent handbook and code of conduct for twenty-two, twenty-three?
As revised.
As revised, so move. Okay, thank you, Kayla. Second? Okay, all those, any other discussion? All those in favor?
I mean.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move, all of us in favor?
Everyone.
Okay, just remember, guys, and I'll send you out a note. We're having a training, the governor would come at our September meeting, September the thirteenth. And we're gonna start at four-thirty.
Okay.
Okay?
No finance, you do that.
No, no finance can be that night.
Okay.
That's correct. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming in on a Friday afternoon. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, don't worry Friday.
And I think Kim appreciates it, because I know she has to move forward. One hundred?
September thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
And he's gonna be your board trade at what?
Four thirty, sorry.
Georgia D, quorum numbers?
I don't know yet, because he has COVID.
Yes, you can give those to me.
Hey, I'll just, I'll just put them in your box, it'll be easier.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the vote was unanimous, nine, zero.
All right, that was my next question. All right, thank you, everybody.
Georgia.
Thank you, Georgia, feel better?
Okay.
Take care.